Yeah, good evening ladies and gentlemen, my name is Balaji. I am happy to welcome you all for the special session on ONDC as a catalyst for collaboration, shaping the future of mobility together. At ONDC, we are wholeheartedly committed to fostering a collaborative transformation designed to accelerate the adoption of technology to reimagine the nation's mobility landscape. Central to this pursuit is a harmonious integration of diverse transportation modes and the infusion of innovative business strategies, all meticulously designed to ensure widespread accessibility. We will begin this session with a short presentation on ONDC's mobility value proposition, followed by a panel discussion. I invite on stage Shri Nitin Nayyar, Senior Vice President, ONDC, to chair the session. I also invite on stage Shri Shan, MS Chief Growth Officer at Jaspay. Shri Manish Rathi, CEO, InterCity Smart Bus. Shri Ankit Kumar, Co-Founder, Meven Tech. And Shri Priya Singh, Co-Founder and Director at Chalo. I invite Shri Nitin Nayyar to the podium.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen, my name is Nitin, I am part of ONDC and I will take you through this presentation, a brief presentation. So, ONDC has been set up with the goal of dramatically increasing e-commerce penetration in India. Now, what do we mean by that? When you look at e-commerce in India, there are about 12 million Kirana stores according to different estimates and only about 15,000 of these are online as part of e-commerce. So, the penetration is generally miniscule and even if you look at larger economies like US with 14 to 16%, China with 25 to 30%, Indonesia with 20, 25%. We are still very behind in the life cycle of being a mature e-commerce environment. Only about 6 to 7% e-retail penetration. And if you were to look at B2B, which is commerce between different entities, this penetration drops about 1 to 1.5%. So, this is the goal with which ONDC has been set up, right? So, we have been designed to solve a bunch of key factors across the value chain blocking participation because it's not just that, it's not just about getting to people and bringing them onboard. It's also understanding why are people not, you know, transacting such a digitally, you know, aware country, right? So, when you look at it, the limited choices for sellers to be online, inability of retailers or merchants to set their own terms and conditions. So, if you look at it, you can either be online, create a website and then you wonder where you do get your demand from, right? Or go to an enabling platform like Shopify and then again, you know, how do you get digital marketing going, how do you get visibility, etc.? Or you join one of the e-commerce platforms and then the challenge of terms, which are always on the side of the platform versus you and the terms are not customizable, right? You typically have a set of terms that's common for everybody, right? And these barriers, right? If you look at all the others also, like if discoverability is a core challenge, right? If I set up a website, you know, even if I am on a platform, all of these discoverability remains a key challenge, right? Also, even if you were to do a website, get a presence, get an order, there is still a bunch of work in terms of order, fulfillment, logistics, returns, managing the entire show, etc., which may not be easy for a, for a regular store, right? Now, let's take a moment to translate these challenges into how they impact mobility, right? The same e-commerce, you know, universe of challenges, how they impact mobility, right? So, there is high commission structure affecting earnings. I mean, if you have taken any of the, you know, online rides, you would definitely hear one of the pet peeves that, you know, the commission structure is high, I am not making enough earnings, there is less autonomy, there is payment terms that, that are all one-sided and there is a certain degree of mistrust. Even from a consumer side, which, you know, something that most of you will relate to, there is high cost of commute due to high fares, unreliable and at times perceived unsafe travel experience, which, you know, don't favor the citizens or users. And even if you look at it from the perspective of governments, right? A bunch of conversations earlier today where we spoke about disconnected transportation systems, more vehicles on the road, adoption of a public transportation system, especially by people who can afford not to be on public transportation is it remains extremely low, right? So, this is all brought to, you know, looking at an open network-led philosophy where we have two defining principles, unbundling and interoperability, right? So, essentially think of, can these platforms, you know, that today maybe mostly two or maybe three in every domain that, that control the entire market be unbundled to make it more easy for people to participate and join in, right? So, let me try to take an example of what that means using email as, let me take email as an example to explain that. Now, look at email, right? You have an email ID, I have an email ID, right? When we both email each other, we are not asking our system integrators to talk to each other, do any API integrations. We get an email seamlessly, right? The two, the CC, the BCC, the content, if it's a calendar invite, it reaches you seamlessly, works perfectly, right? All of this is because, all of this works using the SMTP protocol, right? Somebody designed a protocol, you know, probably 40 years ago, right? Which over the last 25 years has transformed email, right? There is a common protocol that everybody uses, right? ONDC is open protocol for digital commerce, aspires to be this protocol for commerce, right? So, let's look at, how do we think we will do this transformation? What is it that we envision, right? So, today if you look at it, you are on platform one and I am using this as an illustration, right? You are a customer and there is a driver, right? You can only interact with the people that are on that platform, right? The set of drivers and the set of customers, they can only interact with each other. And the people on platform two cannot talk to the driver on platform one or the customer on platform one cannot talk to the driver on platform two, right? Now, let's look at what an open protocol would potentially do, right? And what we endeavor to do is have an open protocol in between which gets all of these apps connected and therefore a customer on app one or platform one, so this deck is available, we will make it available, right? Is able to connect to drivers on the same platform as a seller app, a bunch of other platforms which have also onboarded drivers, right? So, suddenly, you are now going to look at an ecosystem where you will be matched with the best possible driver, right? Irrespective of which platform he got onboarded from. Think of it not just from the, the perspective of being able to, you know, get supply from different platforms but also from the perspective how that makes it efficient, right? Because most of, most of us do multi-apping because, you know, which is the lowest ETA, lowest price, all of this we are doing, right? Imagine if all of this information could be, you know, available irrespective of your app and that's the important part, it's not on a buyer app, right? It's on any buyer app offering mobility on ONDC, you will be able to get the same set of supply across, right? Now, how do, how do we think this will look, right? In the future, once we are building, we are a very early stage up. In fact, I would want to talk about this, you know, I joined ONDC formally last year on 31st October and one of the first things I did was to attend the Urban Mobility Conference last year, the 15th one, 2nd to, I think 5th November in Kochi, right? Mobility was very, very early, we had some work done by Becken in Kochi, Namayatri was launching, right? And it's been a year and I will talk about what we have done in the last year, right? So, how do we think this entire ecosystem will look? On the network, you will see that you will have diverse modes of transportation, right? And this is the key thing that I would want to highlight, right? Whether it's taxis, three-wheelers, e-rickshaws, intercity buses, intra-city buses, two-wheelers, metros, you know, whatever metro in, or whatever transportation cities where they are available, all of this inventory is now joining the ONDC network, right? Progressively, you know, we have a bunch of inventory already live, other inventory is joining as we speak, more inventory is coming in, right? And on the right side, you see apps, right? These are buyer apps, anybody with a consumer base, a large enough consumer base and wants to monetize that can potentially be a buyer app, right? So, we already have the payment apps live, we have Phone Pay with a new app called PIN Code, Paytm is directly live and a bunch of other apps, including banks like Kotek that have come in and many other apps, right, which are on the pipeline to come in, right? All of these will be able to consume, right? The entire inventory available for mobility and other segments, right? On the ONDC network and therefore will be able to offer services that they had historically not offered potentially, right? Now, how does this change things, right? Look at establishing a win synergy for supply providers. You are already seeing drivers are very happy because of the higher revenues they are making, there is increased and optimized resource allocation and there is database planning. See, the other benefit is because the data is now not owned by the platform, right? The data is owned by the entire network plus the community, right? We are able to do far more community-led decision-making, right? Also, there is from a citizen's perspective, right? Convenience is improving, right? If you look at all surveys that, that come out about what the ONDC apps are doing, one of the first things that you will hear is, I find it more convenient, the drivers are happy, therefore my ride experience is better, there is no haggling around payments because, you know, payment experience has been dramatically improved. Overall boost in productivity and improved well-being, right? Broadly, this is what, you know, what the citizens have accomplished. From a government standpoint, if you look at it, there is inclusive economic growth, right? The whole, the whole idea behind ONDC is to improve digitization and therefore bring more people to the organized economy, right? Environmental improvement is by far an accrued benefit, right? And there is a thriving citizens' community, right? This is a citizen community-led initiative and not a single app or a single company, you know, trying to do this all alone. Now, let's see where we are, we are, I spoke about a year of ONDC mobility, we are in four cities or we are doing 1.3 lakh registered drivers, 30 lakh total riders, 1.45 crore lifetime trips and 217 crores in driver earnings, right? And the beauty of this is our apps have leveraged the power of the open network and therefore started with a no-commission structure, right? And, and some of, some of the partners who are here, Shan will talk about it, so I am not going to steal his thunder to talk about how they are differentiating versus competition, right? And, and therefore, there has been a very early semblance of yes, you know, this is making sense, people have started to adopt it and our early city experiments are showing very, very promising results, right? And as we speak forward, you will see a bunch of other things coming in. I am going to try and show you an illustration of what we are trying to do. So, this is a multimodal experience we are building, right? So, you have auto, so somebody going from Ifco Chalk to Barakamba Road in Delhi, right? So, the first mile was an auto, he gets to the nearest metro station, he gets on the metro, gets off at Rajiv Chalk from Ifco Chalk to Rajiv Chalk and then the last mile on a, on a bus, right? If all of this inventory, right? From the three different players here, there is an auto, there is metro and then there is a bus operator, right? It's a DTC in Delhi, right? If all of them join the ONDC network and make the inventory available, right? And some of this is already integrating as we speak and we will go live in the next couple of weeks, right? You will be able to build a single journey experience for the consumer, right? And now start suddenly thinking about the value proposition, right? We already have, Noble, thank you for joining us, Google is here, Google is already integrating and Google from Google Maps will make metro ticketing available, for example, right? So, this is how the new things that we are trying to build and therefore transform the entire mobility experience. I will move forward. Yeah, I will give you, try and give you another example of how this will start changing, right? Now, while urban mobility is about transporting in the city, a very large part of, you know, transportation happens into or outside the city by people who travel say for leisure or for work, right? Now, typically, you have a bus ticket, an airline ticket, you have hotel accommodation, travel to bus station, travel from bus station to hotel, sightseeing, a bunch of inventory, right? Today, if you look at it, this is an illustrative example of the number of places you need to go to plan a trip, right? The bus ticket is on RedBus, the, the hotel is on MakeMyTrip, the cab bazaar, Just Dial, whole bunch of places, right? Imagine if all of this inventory, right? On a buyer app, right? And ONDC buyer app tomorrow is able to offer you all of these diverse inventory in one place and therefore build a seamless booking experience, right? Everybody here would probably be a business traveler. Just think of the entire pain that we go through in terms of, okay, there is a ticket on email, there is a check-in, you know, your boarding card on email, there is a hotel voucher somewhere on email, there is a cab booking we do on a one app and you know, on multiple apps, right? Imagine if this all could be seamlessly integrated into a single buyer app which becomes your single source for your entire travel, right? Not just, just the airline or just the hotel or just the cab, but the entire experience. Having said this, I also wanted to make a few important distinctions. ONDC is an open network capability and infrastructure. We are not an application platform or a product. You cannot log into ONDC and do any of what I said, right? ONDC is a backend infrastructure, different apps come join ONDC and therefore they are able to seamlessly integrate and interoperate, right? There are infinite models fertile for innovation, there is a lot of new stuff coming in. Eliminate need for central intermediaries, we are not a central intermediary. The transaction eventually happens between the two apps like email, right? You don't, your emails don't hit a central server and then come to you, right? The two email servers, yours and mine, talk to each other directly on the protocol. Similarly, eventually, the transaction happens between two entities, the buyer app and the seller app, the buyer and the seller who are connecting directly, right? It's a marketing community-led initiative, right? So, it's while we have the Ministry of Commerce, you know, guiding us, it's actually a marketing community-led initiative, ONDC has been set up as a Section 8 not-for-profit company, right? We are a private not-for-profit company and, and therefore we are not a regulator, we are not a single, a central intermediary and we are not a single model, right? Couple of important things and distinctions I would want to make. Also, I want to talk about, we are truly made in India, digital revolutions for the world. This is our Advisory Council of stalwarts who built, you know, population-scale digital public infrastructure and this is a broad journey of ONDC from an idea in June 2021 to September 2022, when we did our first beta transaction in Bangalore. I am going to quickly get on through two case, two, three case studies. There is Kerala where we signed an MOU with the state government to onboard all kinds of, Kerala state is committed that all their inventory across cities, whether it's, you know, cabs, autos, whether it is the bus operators, whether it is metro, all of them will join the network, right? Broadly, this is how the ONDC network will look in Kerala. You have all distinct type of, you know, entities which have all, I mean, most of these entities are under integration and we expect, Barasar spoke earlier today, Kochi Metro is expected to be the first metro to go live, right, of all the metros in India, right? And we expect to go live in the next 45 days, right? What's been the impact so far? We have in Kochi city compared to Bangalore, it's a smaller market, we have 6,500 registered drivers, 2.4 lakh registered users, 2.3 lifetime, 2.3 lakh lifetime trips and a 5.8 crore lifetime earning. The next is Bangalore, I am going to be very brief, I will leave Shan to talk about what's been done, the numbers speak for themselves. Kolkata is also a very interesting experience for all of us. In Kolkata, the West Bengal government took a decision that they want to join the ONDC network and run, run apps for their driver community and the consumers, right? It was formally inaugurated by the Chief Minister, Mr. Shivathimohamata Banerjee, I think on 14th earlier during the Dashara time. But, you know, it's been a great experience working with them. The essential project involved digitizing, not just launching a cab service for Kolkata but also digitizing five prepaid queues which were historically there. So, if you have been to Kolkata, you know, at the Kolkata Airport and the four railway stations, Howada, Siyala, Satragachi in Kolkata, where Howada is the largest railway station in India, there were large prepaid booths which have all been digitized and today offer a seamless experience like your Bangalore airport, where you get out, you book, you get a pin, you walk up, you, you get into the first cab and you are gone, right? Beautiful experience also as part of the larger digitization initiative, right? We didn't look at a solution that was only about, you know, smartphone users, right? And if some of you from Kolkata would know, the concept of a chota phone and a bada phone, right? The chota phone is the, the feature phone and the bada phone is a smartphone, right? So, the huge community of drivers, there are passengers, huge communities which still are on non-fart food news, built an entire solution to support them. There were drivers without bank accounts, SBI stepped up and came in and made bank accounts. We had challenges with UPI, QR code, direct payments, Paytm supported us there and we had no, you know, good wifi connectivity at some places and, and we had fiber coming in and the government building all of this. So, some fantabulous work by the state government, supported by great technology partners in building this out. So, I think that's broadly, you know, what I want to cover in the presentation. I think more we will speak as we speak with our partners and, and get the conversation moving.
Thank you. Thank you Nitin. We would follow this with a panel discussion about building on ONDC, collaboration and community initiatives within ONDC.
Thanks Balaji. I think after the brief introduction on ONDC, I wanted to welcome our esteemed partners. Some of them are already integrated and live and others were in the process of integrating. I welcome Shan from Jaspay, Manish from InterCity, Amit from Meven Tech and Priya from Chalo, right? Thank you and I am going to do two rounds of questions in round robin, you know, just getting to hear from you, right? So, let me start with you Shan, right? You've been one of the early adopters, right? Like some of the work you did pre-dates, even ONDC on looking at open networks, etc., right? How, how has been the journey so far and how are you thinking about creating value at scale?
Sure, thanks, thanks Nitin, a wonderful presentation and a big thanks to everyone. Staying late on a Saturday is not easy but sure that will make it interesting for all of you. Definitely what ONDC and Open Network for Digital Commerce and Mobility, in particular, we are going to talk about that, what kind of transformation, what kind of an impact it can create is quite, quite exciting. So, I will talk a little bit about the parent company, our journey and what we believe and how this can probably benefit lot of ecosystem partners as well. So, Jaspay is the parent company, we, we are a 12-year-old company. We believe in contributing a lot on the ecosystem initiative. For example, when UPI was launched, we built the Beam app in partnership with the NPCI. During demonetization, within a very short timeframe, we had to build it and kind of help the country get into the digitization journey. That journey and as a small company being part of that journey really helped us to see how a open network or how different players in the ecosystem can come together and solve a bigger problem. India as a country in the payments is today is being quoted as the role model for a lot of countries outside the world, right? People say that US is seven years behind compared to India when it comes to the digital payments. That was possible because of the much broader thinking from lot of people, especially around how do we build a digital public infrastructure? And payments happened to be, it was initially Aadhaar, then payments, then more things can happen over and above that. So, that started with Beam and our journey was very enriching as a company, we enjoyed the journey. Then there is a credit, open credit enablement network, another volunteering initiative happened. Then, when Becken Foundation started an open mobility protocol, we, we kind of felt that, okay, if anybody who asked, right, whether you want a open system or a closed system, we jumped and said that we want a open system. The worldview is moving towards more of an open system, not just, not just a protocol but a software is moving towards open source. People like open data, people like roadmap which is a lot more open and it's being jointly built as well. So, when the vision of an open mobility protocol came in through, through Becken Foundation, we felt that we, we can contribute back to the ecosystem as one of the volunteers. That's when during COVID, Yatri app happened as a reference app for the open protocol in. And then when Becken Protocol formed as the initial reference for ONDC to pick it up as a much broader agenda, that was only a protocol but you have to kind of make it a reality. And when that happened, we felt that, okay, it is not just a protocol or a reference, it's going to make the transformation as well. From Kochi, it moved to Bangalore when, that's where I think one of the most important realization happened for us. When we think about sustainable mobility, two things stood out for us. We are all very privileged here, getting the benefits even just as a company, got the benefit of technology, AI, automation, all the things that we are talking about. On the other side, you see the service providers like drivers who feel the very same technology is supposed to empower them. Today, they feel that the technology is kind of stifling them, they feel marginalized, they feel that the platforms are completely controlling them in the sense. So, what we felt is that the digital divide between the service providers and the technology or the platforms is kind of widening. So, we allow to, the technology has to bring the service providers or the drivers along. That's why I think the empowering the service provider, empowering the drivers with the technology, what we call it as scaling empathy. So, just the technology may not be enough, here you allow to bring the people element and for that to happen, Samaj, Sarkar and Bazaar has to come together. So, I think it has happened in the past. Here, we want to specifically talk about the Samaj of the driver community coming together and Sarkar, be it ONDC or be it the metros and the buses coming together and the, I mean, the bazaars of the world, companies like us, the partners here who will always push for innovation, technology and agility is we felt that it's a, Namayatri is a good example of Samaj, Sarkar, Bazaar coming together to solve a meaningful problem for a city which is extremely open. A concept like ONDC was picked up very well by not just the citizens of Bangalore but also by the driver community. Nitin spoke about the numbers, I don't want to talk about it much. I think it's a very fulfilling journey for our company but I think there is a lot more stuff to be done, not just, not just auto. Today, auto drivers feel that, okay, they are getting not just higher earnings, the respect and the agency which it's providing but I think mobility will become sustainable only when we integrate it with the most important part of the buses and metro and that's been the core tenet of ONDC and Open Mobility. And we are very excited about in a forum like this, right? I think all the participants are coming together and we could make that reality by integrating not just the service providers but integrating the buses and metros into the open network.
Thanks Shan, I think that, that was good spotlight for, you know, the entire experience that you have had as one of the earliest players and probably not one of the, arguably the earliest player, right? Moving on, Manish, I would want to come to you, right? InterCity was set up with the objective of transforming, you know, intercity bus transportation in India, right? It's not like the product didn't exist, right? But you guys have invested significant time in transforming the entire experience and, and differentiating yourself with a very different experiences from what conventionally is offered, right? Having said that, you know, now that you are joining the network, how do you see the network contributing to, you know, the insights you have on what could be done better, better to, you know, digitize and, and, you know, expand the entire intercity bus network?
Thanks. Just give you a little bit background, just to set the context of the experience which we talked about and why we had to do that. So, we of course started our journey from the train side, you know, we were helping out passengers, book tickets, things like that. And over the period, we realized that, you know, the, over the period, we realized that as the population or as the, as the mobility of the country is increasing and as the government has been putting up so much of their investments on the road network, we saw that trains would become a little bit of a choke point over a period of time but the more India's travel will start happening across on the bus side. However, we saw that, however, we saw that, you know, when we were, when we used to talk with the consumers, when we used to talk across a train traveler, they would go back home if their train ticket did not get confirmed but they wouldn't go on a bus. And when we kind of started pilling some onions around from why that was happening around, we saw that the service experience across on the bus side had to change, had to change. It had to be kind of become a little bit of a comparable. Just to give you a little bit background, people are used to kind of going across on a railway station, sitting for a train, waiting for the train and sitting under shade at least. You know, if you are talking about buses, today we are talking about, you know, say, say, standing at a petrol pump, under the bridge, things like that, to kind of catch a bus. You know, the other breakpoint, other breakpoint for lot of passengers and especially senior citizens, women travelers across was the, was the washroom. Trains had washrooms, buses didn't have, you know, you had to kind of, you know, you had to kind of live in that confusion. People would say, I would rather go back, back on train as compared to buses than the safety and all of tech and those things around. So, we took at InterCity what, while I think correctly said, the bus industry in India is probably now in the second generation or third generation in some sense. But that experience layer is what we focused across so that people who are traveling on trains can think about in case if they do, if they want to take a bus journey, that the, this experience is kind of similar if not exactly the same. And that's where we, about three, four years back, we launched across what this, across is a, called as an InterCity Smart Bus platform, platform. This is simply think about us that, you know, we kind of go to this SMB business people who have, who have these buses, we help them across to kind of convert them, convert their buses into a certain experience platform and then along with that, along with that, we allow them, we allow the consumers to kind of get a better experience. See, the, the difference between an in-city mobility versus a long-distance mobility is because in the long-distance mobility, there are a lot of many other decision points you have to do. You are worried about, is the seat comfortable? Can I sleep across on the bed? Where would I go for a washroom? Where would I have my dinner? You know, all these decision-making kind of comes across when you are taking a long-distance journey as compared to let's say a short journey which is 30 minutes, 30 minutes or within the city part. And to standardize that and to provide that as a part of tech, as part of tech, whether it be it, be it booking, be it, you know, looking at and choosing the right seat for yourself, deciding where you are going to eat, you know, where you are going to go for a washroom, things like that. All of that experience is what entails a long-distance, a long-distance bus journey and for, at least from a consumer point of view. And then for the suppliers or the, the, the business people, for them to, how to get the best buck out of their investment which is a bus? How do you get, you know, how do you get the best back? Where, where would, where should they run the bus? Which route they should take? Where would the demand come across from? All of them, all of the challenges is something what we were, we have, we started focusing across. So, the, when we started talking with your team, what we realized, what we realized that, you know, there are two, three important aspects and besides of course, the technology side. Is first across is the, just getting a higher visibility of the, higher visibility of the supply is, is definitely going to be there. Second across is, you know, I also believe across is that when you open up, when you, when you build up your products across on a platform like, like innovation starts becoming much more faster. You know, there is going to be some, I am pretty sure as we kind of, you know, let's say in a six months, one, 12 months down the road, then as we have the intercity buses getting long, there would be some, you know, good entrepreneur who would be building up a very interesting service on top of it, connecting across and giving a much more wider experience to the traveler. So, for us, that belief of, belief of getting and building up that wider experience giving across has been a... giving across as a, been a, you know, one of the big decision pointer to kind of jump across to the ONDC platform. And, you know, while there are few chinks we have to kind of solid across, but that's something I'm pretty confident we'll launch across, we'll solid across in few months. But very excited about this platform and, you know, over a period of time, over a period of time, there's going to be a lot of, you know, the business, the business side, which is going to get impacted and positively get impacted because of this.
Thanks, Manish. I'll now jump across to Amit, right? Amit, as Mamantech, you've been the backbone of, you know, digitizing the bus industry, right? Probably the largest player, but having said that, it's still got a very large segment that's not digitized, there are challenges around that, right? And then you're going to be a part of ONDC, how do you foresee this entire ecosystem evolving? And how do you foresee, you know, ONDC's impact on the bus ecosystem?
Yeah, so for last like twelve to thirteen years, we have been trying to solve some of the same problems. When you look into bus industry, especially the bus operators, you have different shapes and sizes of bus operators, right? You have, it's, it's fragmented, it's not as fragmented as cabs or, or auto rickshaw, but it's still fragmented. And you have players like with one or two buses running and you have on other sides, you know, in hundreds and thousands of buses running. So you have different problems. When you deal with mid-size or small-size bus operators, the constant problem which you and which we have always faced is, how to ensure that this digitization in the end solves his basic business needs? How does you ensure that you get, you know, the ROI of what he is investing into? How do you ensure that his occupancy rates are maintained? Now, the way things have been running is there are like certain centralized systems, centralized e-commerce platforms where this, these inventors get sold. So at times what happens, they have to agree to, and which you rightly said, to different kind of, you know, terms and policies. So there, the differentiation goes away. Even if you differentiate, how do you ensure that that differentiation gets acknowledged by the consumer in the end, right? How do you ensure that the final feedback which you are getting from the consumer and reaches to you? At times what happens is in between the e-commerce platforms, those feedbacks are there. But are they reaching back to the bus, bus operators? How do you improve their service levels, right? So these are the problems which we have been actually working on, we have been trying to build products around it. When we decided to be part of ONDC and now as we work, we will be looking to solve some of these problems. Think of it like, as I said, like feedback and I think Manish has rightly said, those amenities and all those things. All those things has to be discovered by the customer, but that has to be, you know, transparently put across to the end consumer without any arbitration, without any, you know, modification in between. The other challenge which most of these small bus operators also face is how do you operate across, when you're just operating between two cities, you're right? Now, how do you get demands which, which you may not be able to cater? You don't have big agents network, you have countable online networks. So how do you ensure to do this? In our case, what we were trying to do is, you know, we had some franchisee network inside where different bus operators used to, you know, collaborate between each other. So hey, I'm going from point A to point B and other bus operator is taking you from point B to point C, can we work together, right? And can we create those kinds of journeys? That becomes more interesting when we, and which I think Nathan rightly touched upon in the multimodal system. Where, you know, I don't even have to think about cities, but I can start from my home and decide, you know, how, how I'm gonna plan for my final destination, how I'm gonna decide on those and which operators I'm gonna deal with, on what criteria I'm gonna deal with. And obviously, you know, when you cut those agents and in between offline, online, whatever agents and all, these operators also gets flexibility in terms of pricing. Bus operation still is a very price-sensitive segment for most of the consumers. Yes, there are premium consumers who look for other stuffs, but pricing has been a pain, right? And this again gives leverage to the bus operators to operate on those. So those would be the challenges which we'll be looking, you know, when we'll be joining ONDC, trying to, you know, expose those kinds of solutions which can solve problems for these kinds of bus operators.
Thanks, Amit. So next I'll come to you, Priya. I mean, eighty percent of India arguably can only travel by something like an intra-city bus, right? And that's the segment that you operate in and you continue to digitize and transform, right? How do you see ONDC as a catalyst, aiding your transformation and kind to expand this entire digitization effort? And collectively bring about that change?
Thank you so much for inviting me and a very good question, relevant question for us. Two, three things here, Nathan. The kind of work we are doing in India, like fifty-one cities, more than like around eighteen thousand buses. But if, if we see in Bombay, Bombay itself, wherein we are implementing at three level, wherein the entire bus fleet of best of three thousand three hundred buses, then the premium buses, which is for the premium segment, office goers, people or airport buses, airport shuttles, we are running. And third is last mile and first mile, which is from Vogo, e-bikes, all three things we are doing in Bombay. And the kind of, so it's, it's going good. But imagine if we come at the platform or we join the network, two, three things will get solved immediately. One is the massive digital adoption. Because you, you open the platform, right? And we have been speaking about it. Second is the adoption of services. Anyone can buy tickets anywhere. Right now, they have to come to Chalo app to buy tickets for premium buses. Just imagine somebody is coming out from airport and they can buy tickets at any platform, right? And we increase the ridership and effectiveness of services. Third is bringing down the timelines in implementation. Because we have implemented this in Best and Bombay. And tomorrow morning, if I go to Kerala and I'm working there with five thousand plus buses, right? If, if I, we are together at the same level, it's just plug and play. And everybody, everything becomes accessible and easy for us. So I think it's a, it's a great opportunity as of now. If we would have seen two years ago, before COVID or pre-COVID, we were working as Chello that time and I didn't see lot of modes of transportation, right? And we haven't thought about it, but two, three years, things have dramatically changed. And I think it's the need of the hour. Thank you.
Thanks, Priya. I'm going to come back to you, Sean. You know, Just Space Journey has been very exciting, you know, lots happening, you've scaled up with auto rickshaws in Bangalore, right? And you're there in couple of cities, right? What does the future look like, right? So of course, there is the on-demand product and a bunch of other things. Love to hear how you think about, you know, leveraging the ONDC network and, and building more on mobility.
Think, thanks, thanks, Nathan. Thanks, Sir Azir. I think we have been working, exploring how we can work more collaboratively with the public transport, right? Nama Metro has been a game changer for, for Bengaluru. The one timeframe, we saw a little bit of a dip or improvement in the acceptance rate of drivers. And we were trying to understand what happened in that specific areas, the improvement has happened during peak time. During peak time in Bangalore, getting a cab or an auto has been a challenge as well. We realized that there was a new line of metro that has been launched. It kind of evened out the supply-demand mismatch as well. So probably we are one such company, we'll be happy with demand going a little down as well. But I think what we really have been trying to do is, okay, as all of us in an ecosystem, in a network, you have to do one thing and do it well, right? We cannot do everything, right? I think there are few things, let's say, a, a, a safety provider might do well, an EV provider might do well. Metro might be good in certain aspects as well, but how can we all come together as a great network and provide that seamless experience for the customer as well? So we have been collaborating with the, the public transport and that has been possible because of an open network as well. So today it could be, let's say, a Namayatri, tomorrow it could be another company as well. It kind of opens it up for everyone to kind of come together and collaborate as well. So for us, as I said, service provider enablement, in addition to that multimodal integrated transportation is very, very important for us because we believe the rate at which our cities are growing. Unless we integrate them, the public transport has to be as seamless, as convenient, as accessible for, for people similar to the platforms which is offering rate hailing, right? That has, that can happen today when you are actually kind of integrating, provide the great technology, provide a great platform for users. So our future growth, I think, one would be expanding and offering more options, which is affordable, accessible and at the same time seamless and convenient for people as well. Second thing is of course, how do we take it as a community initiatives to multiple states as well, work with the respective stakeholders? We are not just an open network, kind of enables you to kind of, you not having to be the player always running the show, right? I think we can enable local entrepreneurship, we can enable local governments to kind of run it as well. So that kind of makes, makes your burden a little less as well. So you can focus on, okay, we are as a technology and product company, building great experience, if you're good at that, we can just focus on that. There might be a company which is very good at, let's say, operating. So, or there might be a company which might be great at providing the infrastructure. So that's the kind of potential future, which is, I think we kind of go back to the UPA again and again. There was a banks coming together, fintechs coming together and then startups coming together and kind of created a brilliant ecosystem for new innovations. And ultimately, who benefited? It's ultimately the customers who benefited, right? Today, I think the number of transactions, then ten billion plus transactions happening, happened because of everybody coming together and innovating.
Thanks, Sean. Thanks, Sean. Very interesting thoughts. Manish, I'll come back to you, right? When you look at it, you know, safety, customer experience, some of the things that you thought, these are not stuff for you. You offer that, you know, unique experience, right? How do you kind of, you know, look at ONDC to leverage to kind of, you know, make this something that helps you expand the business and grow from here?
See, I think if I, if I had to put it a little bit more bluntly, India, in my personal opinion, in the next four, five years, there will be more people traveling on road or taking a long-distance journey as compared to, let's say, taking, somebody taking trains and all. So till today, till today, you know, buses for whatever historical reasons were always considered to be the lesser cousin of flights or trains. You know, you would probably think about, you know, attitude, right? So, you know, so first of all, first of all, our goal across is even if we can come bring bus travel to the same decision-making layer as flights as train, we believe we will achieve a big goal which we have set for ourselves. You know, that's the first threshold which we are keeping across. To do that, to do that, we need to kind of, of course, build up this operating standards which we are doing across at the intercity. But it is also important for us to, you know, our partners who are the bus partners, they get, you know, they get. So I, I take an example, so for example, Mumbai-Delhi highway, you know, which is very soon will kind of bring it across to about, said across fourteen, sixteen hours, fourteen, sixteen hours of bus, hours of road travel, that means about thousand, two thousand buses on that road, new buses on that road, correct? That's how we look at it, you know, shortening of the, shortening of the travel distance, more buses on the road. Now, how do we make sure that these buses get onto a platform rather than taking six months and ten months for them to kind of come across to a network? I think a platform like ONDC will be super helpful on those aspects to get this scales. And of course, the demand side, more accessibility, you're working with much more flexible rules with the quote-unquote middleman out here. And, you know, tho- those, those things will really help out from the ONDC side.
Thanks, Manish. That's a great articulation of the entire India story. I'll come back to you, Amit, right? Because I've been providing technology to the bus operators, right? And setting up bus operators for success, right? You know, you're the, you're the tech power there, right? What adjacencies or value additions do you think that you could use the ONDC network for? That you potentially today don't do or today don't venture out to, right? Other things that you could potentially look at.
Right, so I think some of those have been already pointed out, but, you know, let's start with the bus operations. Right now, you are transporting passengers. Can you collaborate and transport goods along with that and provide additional margins to the bus operators, right? It happens as, as we speak even now, but then in a well-organized and, you know, with a decent demand, it gives that much of concern to the bus operators. The second thing which I, again is happening with ONDC is food and grocery where you guys are doing pretty good. Now, when you take intercity bus travels and all, you know, footing, gross, food, what would be the meals and all those things? Those things can be bundled together, right? You can choose and maybe, and this has been a constant ask, I think. But due to lack of, you know, integrating partners with whom we can partner to, on, on various cities, right? Because when you are talking about intercity buses, buses will stop on X, Y, Z locations. How do you find the right partners? How do you ensure that the food quality is good and all those things? So those kinds of services which you can bring on, you know, along with the bus service or bus journey itself. And obviously, you can, in the end, also, as I was saying, bundle it with other travels modes. Like you can, you know, book your hotel stays, you can book your cab, your auto rickshaws from, from point to point. So, so those are straightforward value-added services which we are looking for. Added to that, on the discovery part or on the, you know, the brand loyalty which most of the bus operators want to create for themselves, right? There you can have, you know, different kind of services, like, you know, a loyalty program or a subscription services and all. Which can come on ONDC platform as a value-added services, which obviously decreases the price for consumers, the consumer wins. But increases the loyalty without, you know, bus operator increasing, you know, recurrent customer acquisition cost, which they are doing as of now in terms of commissions to agents.
Thank you. I'll move to my last question to you, Priya. Digitization of, you know, city transportation is, is a fairly large and a formidable challenge, right? And you guys are at the forefront of it. So coming back, as more information is available, right? How do you foresee this impacting the not stuff for everybody on transportation is multimodality, right? It's one of the most formidable and toughest challenges to solve, right? And if you look at any transportation conversation, I think that's probably the most important thing that we're all aspiring to do, right? How do you think ONDC will contribute, right, to the entire multimodality experience with diverse inventory coming in?
The problem in this country is if specifically I talk about buses, you don't want to take buses, there are multiple reasons. And one of the reason is that bus is not available when you go down from your house or you get out from your office. So you need to solve the entire end-to-end journey. And if you solve the end-to-end journey, the another problem comes is the ticketing, right? Because then you have to buy four tickets or three tickets wherein ONDC can, you know, come in the picture. That you, you create a platform, marketplace kind of platform wherein everybody can access the information that what I'm getting when I'm getting down, right? Second thing is, if I get a single ticket, I can travel anywhere for a day. And specifically in Bombay, again, as Manish was saying, that we are solving this, wherein we, we give single journey ticket for entire day for buses specifically as of now. But imagine if we solve the entire end-to-end journey, right? If we connect somebody from, right from the Vogo e-bike to Chalovas, to premium bus, to metro, to local train, it's just solved. And, and, and then you also provide the information. So the problem with Indian consumer, wherein eighty percent people, so in America, there are like ninety-nine cars on hundred people. In India, there are like two-point-nine cars against hundred people. So like almost ninety-seven percent, ninety-eight percent people are using public transport or some percent might be using bikes. Most of us are dependent on public transport and the, the entire segment has given up on public transport because they know that it cannot be solved. the the entire segment has given up on public transport because they know that it cannot be solved. But as the initiatives like O N D C, I think there is a hope. And if partners like us and other people, right, we all have to come together. It cannot get solved that, okay, I'm solving with you and for other people are not solving. All the entrepreneurs, right minds, they have to come either by will, wish or force. We should do that so that it's solved for the end consumer, not for your personal gain or anything. Because we all are working for the same cause. So if he's solving operator problem, I'm solving a consumer problem, then I solve operator problem also. So my intent is to solve this and O N D C, I think, is the right platform, right opportunity for all of us to come together and solve this.
Thanks, Priya. With that, I'll come to, you know, closing the session, but just some, you know, closing thoughts. Well, India is estimated to be between one eighty to two hundred million trips daily, right? People, that's the amount of people traveling in the next three to four years. That number is expected to go up somewhere between four fifty to five hundred million. Of course, there are no organized numbers for these, these are all estimates because it's not digitized and therefore measurement is difficult. But having said that, that's a very large problem in itself, right? About five hundred million trips a day, people traveling for work, for leisure, for business, for multiple other purposes, right? So I think our endeavor remains to digitize as much of it as possible. If you represent a transportation medium, an app, please, you know, take this opportunity, join the O N D C network. Joining is extremely simple. You just have to build a few APIs to connect to the network and all the information that is relevant to you or the or what you're trying to do if you're an app, getting inventory or if you're a, an inventory provider getting demand is very, very seamlessly and easily accessible. It's just about building a few API connectors and going live on the network and leveraging the power of the network. So with this, I come to the close of the session. Thank you very much, everybody. We hope that, you know, if you are a company that can join the network, you join soon. And as a consumer, we hope to bring that experience to you in the near future. Thank you. Oh, I'll come to questions, sir. So, please.
Thank you. I hope I'm audible.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. First of all, excellent infographic presentation. You call it a deck. I just learned it from your speech. Please convey my regards to your deck design team. Because this is how an infographic presentation should be liked for people. I don't know how many of the people sitting here will realize, but you surely will realize what I'm saying. I'm not talking about the content, I'm talking about the style of content being put on the slide. Secondly, I am not a technology geek. So there is something called Skyscanner, there is something called Trivago which is available online. They compare flight ticket rates from four, five different booking sites and they tell you a specific flight at what rate is available anywhere. So will O N D C also do so that me and my wife, we open, one opens, say for example, Ola, the other one opens Uber. We are, we are to travel in the same cap and we check which of the two are kind of cheaper. And so can O N D C also do something of this kind wherein we get to know for a particular trip, A to B? I belong to Nannital, I seldom come to Delhi or Bangalore or any places, but that is the way we do when we go to Delhi, Bangalore or any other place. And the last thing I would like to seek from you. So for a small place like Dehradun, what I saw on your slides, I came to realize that you have chosen Kolkata, you have chosen Kochi, you have chosen Bengaluru. So for us, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my sore also. So for small places, can places choose you to come to their town? What could be the threshold kind of a thing? Thank you.
So firstly, sir, thank you for that compliment. I'll pass it on to the team that worked with us in designing the the presentation with us. Now, the example that you took about Skyscanner, let me try and elaborate what are the synergies and how we are different, right? So Skyscanner also has diverse inventory pricing information, et cetera, right? But I think the not stuff for O N D C is a transaction. For us, a buyer app has to be doing our transaction. You're not trying to aggregate information and organize it. You have Google for that, right? Google is here, they'll do that for you, right? I think the important thing is the network is built with the purpose of fostering transaction. Information relevant to it will be available, the ability to compare prices, ETAs or, you know, other features, value additions that, you know, people like Manish would offer, would be available. But I think the core remains a transaction, right? For us, our APIs are designed in such a way that we go from search, discovery, further down to a confirm where a transaction happens. And then there are status and update APIs for sending supplementary information, right? So that's one core differentiation. Now, the choice of cities is is fairly incidental, right? We would, I mean, being the the DNA that we come from, we will cover the entire country, right? If you look at, you know, some of the work that we did in Kolkata or some of the work in Kochi, right? It's very different from what, how a business would operate it. And that's some, somewhere the blessing that when you set up as a not-for-profit, right? And you're not looking at making money, right? And you have the union government supporting us and, you know, helping us proliferate. Essentially, if you look at, I'll go back to the Kolkata example. If you look at Kolkata, we did digitize the the chota phone, the the non-digitalized drivers, right? There's a fair amount of work went in, Sean and team supported with it. And, you know, there is fair amount of work when that and say that today, if you go, that there's no other app, to the best of my knowledge, and I come from this industry, which kind of is inclusive to non-smartphone, your feature phone, you know, customers or speech, feature phone drivers, right? So we took a first step and said, let's try and build something that is inclusive, right? It's not something built with the only idea that, okay, there is smartphone penetration and, you know, that's about it, right? And and we are, we are also very, very, you know, perceptive to the truth that smartphone penetration is continuing to increase, right? Over the next couple of years, probably everybody will be on smartphone, right? But there's still remain a small segment, right? Like I think, Ragjanji said, there is a room for certain amount of cash, right? It's not going to just vanish, right? There's a, similarly, there's a certain room on for feature phones, smaller towns, all of this, this is an inclusive mission, right? And the reason you see only four cities there is, I think our apps have spent a fair amount of energy in trying to build a successful product, right? And if you look at past models, right? And particularly in mobility, I must take this opportunity to compliment Sean and team, right? There are broadly about eight, ten companies that have solved this on-demand mobility problem, right? Let's try and count how many companies do we know? In the U S, you have Lyft and Uber, right? In Europe, you have Yandex. In Middle East, you have Kareem. In India, you have Ola, Rapid or Uber. In Southeast Asia, you have Gojek, Grab, right? And G D in China, right? That's about eight to nine companies, right? And now we have a company that does a hundred thousand transactions a day, right? It's a fairly monument, you know, momentous accomplishment that they've come together and did what they did. And that focus on driver and problem solving. So while expanding is important, we will definitely expand and we will be in, you know, a couple of hun-, you know, at least a couple of tens of cities by the end of the year. But I think the important part of the journey is our apps have been busy solutioning, right? Trying to build a great product so that adoption is natural, right? You don't want to force-feed a product, you know, you know, value speed over, you know, outcome and and then, you know, not have the right product, right? Small cities will have other set of challenges, right? If you look at, one of the reasons, and coming from on-demand, I'll tell you, ninety-five, ninety-seven percent of all trips on an on-demand platform happen in about ten cities, right? Beyond that, the volume is almost negligible, right? That's because that product is designed that way, right? It 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 is a product for density where ETAs are a function of how close the driver is and therefore volume, volume is important. Whereas what Nannital or Dehradun may need, right, may be something slightly different. And and what the network is fostering and bringing companies together to start thinking of building a product that's most suitable for your ecosystem, right? You'll have large pickup distances, right? You will not have one, one-point-two-kilometer pickup distances with, you know, maybe you will have only about two thousand autos or cabs versus a city like Delhi probably has one-point-five lakh cabs, right? So the problem statement is different and therefore solutioning will be different, but we will come there and that's that's something that I would promise you.
Yeah, I must also compliment on the slide deck, but yeah, a few couple of questions. Is O N D C the end of, say, Ola, Uber, right, Amazon? How do you position yourself, right? So some thoughts on that. And the second question is, do you also have provisions for, you know, citizen auditing, right? How is O N D C ensuring it's open enough? A couple of thoughts, but yeah.
I think two great questions, right? The first one gets asked more often, the second one seldom, but both get asked, you know, asked, right? So the first one, I'd say if you look at it, we are back in infrastructure, right? And some of the players you took, we are already talking to them, right? For example, Ola already offers Ola Foods, right, on the O N D C network. What they've done is, they realize that, you know, why mobility is something that they would need to think about. But they see that they have a large consumer base, they are a buyer app for millions of consumers and the network offers, you know, fifty, sixty thousand restaurants today, right? And therefore, Ola is now already offering food, right? So all of these big companies are in different stages of conversations with us in terms of coming in, right? Now, how they will come, what they will, you know, choose to start with, that's a conversation you need to have with them. But I think the important distinction as an answer to your question that I like to make is that we are back in infrastructure. We are never competing with any app for that matter, right? We don't own the customer, we don't own the supply. And that brings me to the second question you asked on data, right? So if you look at this, you know, and if you get a little deeper into our technical architecture, right? We don't know who the consumer is, right? We do not collect that data, right? We only have data of search and discovery. So let me illustrate a journey, right? Somebody opened Paytm, right, searched. And the only thing Paytm is sending to the network is saying, I have a customer at this, at this geo-location, right? Who's looking for a mobility solution. It may be specific to say that I'm looking for an auto or a cab or it may be generic, right? It comes to the network, the network has two important components, registry and the gateway. The registry is a listing of all our apps, right? It look at the registry and say, okay, this is a mobility request in, say, Delhi, right? And the registry knows which are the apps that offer that in Delhi, right? It will broadcast it to these apps, right? The apps respond, right, and say, this is what I can offer, I can offer you auto, I can offer you metro ticket, I can offer you multimodal experience and comes back to the buyer app, right? Buyer app then shows it to the consumer and then a transaction happens, right? It's directly between the buyer app and the seller app, right? Going back to the email example, right? The only way we could scale at at a rapid pace is if we don't be a central intermediary. Therefore, the final transaction is between the buyer and the seller, right? We only collect some supplementary information for the health of the network and managing the network. We do not have core transaction data, right? Of course, all your apps are public, right? What you do with them, if there are any complaints, our network policy mechanism ensures that if there are any complaints, there is a redressal mechanism. And we all, we have a specific API called Issue and Grievance Manager for network participants. If you are a buyer, buyer app, seller, you know, seller app, seller logistics app. If there is any issue, payments, complaints against anybody, unlike the current ecosystem where only customers complain, suppliers don't have right to complain, right? If you look at it, have you ever heard that as a seller, I can raise a complaint, barely anybody? The network is more democratic and allows any participant to raise what we call an issue first against any other participant by virtue of the transaction or by virtue of any other aspect of the transaction. And if that doesn't get solved, there is grievance and there is a way to manage that and there is an entire process that has been built around it. So we have a specific API for issue and grievance management. Thank you. Nobody else, yes?
What the other gentleman or their company is doing, right? Is there visibility across, that's the kind of question?
No. See, the only information you share, right, is the information that pertains to that transaction. So if you have requested for an intra-city ride in a city that Chalo operates and Chalo chooses to respond because the terms are okay, that that's an important distinction. The seller has the choice to respond or not respond depending on what terms, right? If you say, I want ten percent commission, Chalo may say, sorry, that doesn't make sense, right? Chalo would respond and you would as buyer app have access to that information from all the seller apps that responded, that transaction information. Similarly, with Namayatri, Namayatri, whatever, you know, information that comes to it as a request, right? Till a transaction happens, there's no customer information. But the beauty of the network, unlike the platform world today, is that the sellers have direct access to customer information whenever there is an order, right? And you will relate to several of the platforms that don't provide this, right? You know, the the sellers have complete access to that information, right? And depending on the on on the mode of transportation, if it's mobility, you know, there is obfuscation of of, you know, personal information. If it's a food order because there's logistics, the restaurant wall, that personal information is available. And that is the only information that travels on the network and is exchanged, right? Your business, what is business critical, your value proposition remains with you. Thank you.
Sir, last question. I just have, I just have one question and I have the mic with me, so I'll go ahead and ask.
Sorry, ah, sorry, yes, please.
I think most of the questions have been answered. I just had one in addition, since this is urban mobility conference and you have a lot of data through your O N D C network and you have next to you, Priya, who's in the Chalo app. Now, with all the data that you will be accumulating, okay, on cab booking, ticket booking and all, to solve our traffic congestion in this urban cities, to solve that problem, would you be proactive in planning out a shuttle services? Say, for example, have three thousand people from my area booking an eight AM flight. I don't expect all the three thousand people to come to your shuttle service or a bus service, but at least a significant portion to quickly plan the things. Say, for example, I know that within my one kilometer radius, living in Noida, around eight thousand people work in Gurgaon. And in that eight thousand, significant go from seven PM to eight, seven AM to eight fifteen AM. So it's a great information where you can plan a shuttle service to to the one next to you. They can do it and you can also earn carbon credits, correct? Is that in your largest scheme of things?
So so let me answer that in two parts. One, O N D C has an open data API initiative, but whatever data we have, right, we will sanitize it and make it available. That's something on our roadmap, right? The second thing that you said is more interesting, if you look at it, right? We let market forces solve for it, right, in some form, right? So if you're saying that Priya is continuously getting a seven AM search that Priya is not able to respond, right? As as one operator and one of the many operators operating in Gurgaon, for example, right? So they know the number of searches they did not respond to from seven AM to eight AM over a week, right? Now, do they want to take action in a week or a month for them? But this information is now available for them to think about and saying, what is it that I did not respond to? What is it that I responded to and did not get an order, right? Where are my orders coming from, right? All of this information bases the search and discovery mechanism and the transactions, Priya or every other operator operating that Geo has this data. Now, it is the innovation on the type of, on the part of the network participant to figure out how to pick it up.
One more thing can happen if, like, in a city, like, there are three operators and they have like three hundred buses, hundred, hundred, hundred each. And sometimes in small cities like Indore and Bhopal, when, where we are running buses, there are a lot of problems of bus bunching and overlapping the services. So if if you know that, like, eight thousand people are traveling from one place to another place in the morning and you have three hundred buses available, but the scheduling and the right timing is not set, then in these kind of services or O N D C platform, you can actually design the entire scheduling and planning and how those buses should be running. There is a, there's a particular time in afternoon, we have done a very small experiment and we haven't done, like, covered the entire thing because it is not in larger scheme of things. But just imagine, in the, in in the afternoon, around seventy percent buses run on a very low frequency, right? And they they run on losses. So you don't have to put buses in afternoon, you just create more rides in the morning, right? And and on the on the platform, on the routes, where it is high-density routes, which is what you are saying. So I may be running, for example, we were doing in Indore wherein there's a area called Mahu and we were running six buses because some, some influence was there and we had to speak to ministers and authorities that six buses are not required. We just have to send one bus in the morning and five buses we can utilize somewhere else. But this is what a small thing we have done. But if we have an entire data, we have entire data, entire city is planned in a way, then you can use the platform and everybody comes together and then we can plan the entire city, it is going to be like perfectly changed city.
Like, if you have a, your cellphone network data will give you your origin and destination. Where are people staying in the nights and where are they working during the days?
Yeah.
So based on that also, you can plan your networks, the city.
We can do that, like in Bombay, we do is live passenger indicator, very small initiative wherein you can see that how crowded your bus is, right? So you can take another bus, which is what Chalo's feature is. But if, just imagine if it is available for entire country, right? You can see live passenger indicator and you can see that, okay, this bus is coming, it is crowded, I don't have to take, after two minutes, some other bus is coming, I will take this bus. It is crowded, I don't have to take, after two minutes, some other bus is coming, I will take this bus. So these kind of platforms can create lot of interoperability and accessibility of services and adoption in services.
Thanks, Priya, sir. In summary, the data is a big opportunity, you know? Some of it will be network data, some of it will be platform data. And different network participants will innovate in their own ways to, you know, leverage it and and build value in solutions, right? So come, I'll ask two questions, sir. I think the two questions there, okay, one more, three.
Yeah, hello. My name is Noble. Um Nitin, I have a question for you. So thanks the, thanks for the presentation in the beginning. It laid out a very inspiring vision that you have. Uh I'm wondering, based on your journey so far and the discussions that you're having, is there a, is there a more foreseeable roadmap, let's say one-year roadmap, that you can share on how you see this panning out? And what what does success look like for you in like, like one-year timeframe?
Uh I think Noble, that's that's a very fair question, but but let me try and answer this way, right? So we are the backend infrastructure, right? What we build is backend. For us, if you look at it, we have now model implementations enabled for everything from a two-wheeler, which is uh uh an EV or a, you know, or a bike, right? To a electric bike, to a bike, to a three-wheeler, to a taxi, of, you know, an intercity taxi, schedule rides, going up to buses intra-intercity, you know, uh metros, suburban, uh railways and airlines, right? The entire gamut, the model implementation is ready, right? What we're now doing is evangelizing and getting everybody to join in, right? Now, for us to define success, I think as many operators coming in, right? But would I be able to say that, okay, we will do one million rides? I don't know, right? I don't think that's how we look at it. Getting as many people to join in and therefore collaborate and take this forward is what I would look at as success for us, the near term.
Sir. Two things I would like to ask. First one is for this application providers as well as the consumers. So are there any charges for uh joining to this ONDC and any data charges based on the transactions or? Second one is suppose I have, I am planning to build an app, a consumer app, uh which would take an origin and a destination and it would suggest the connected route and the transit uh ways. So in that case, uh from the producer or the providers' apps, we'll get the different services. But at the first level, if I have to project a route from origin, you have to travel this much, get down here, take another service and and continue the journey. So in that case, the at the first level, we have to get a routing service. So is from the ONDC platform, we will be really getting a routing type of search or features like that or is it just like the uh service, uh the application services which are shared by the providers? We will be getting, we have to search the individual providers and get the information.
Yeah, so let me answer the first part. Currently, there's no charges to join ONDC, right? You have to use the technical integration. We have a technical integration testing process and a QA process on the completion of which you go live on the network and join sixty apps and we add a couple of apps every month now, right? There are no charges today, right? But in 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 the future, the network would need, we are not-for-profit, we are funded right now. But at some point in time, we would have some nominal charges, right? The whole vision is to do this at scale. Therefore, we expect some very, very nominal charges to come in. And I give everybody comfort by saying there are not-for-profit, we don't need to make money. So that's the beauty of it. So we will levy some charges in in the future, which will kind of cover for our cost, which is largely tech and people, right? That's the first part. On a second part, if you want to build a consumer app, right? You are good to search on the network, you will need some kind of map and capability on your side to be able to, you know, gather Geo, harness that information, understand what the consumer wants, send it to the network, get responses from all the sellers, seller apps, right? And then process and rank it to, uh you know, get it done, yeah? So that's something that you will need as a capability, the network doesn't offer routing as a feature, right? You will have to build that on your side, right? I think the last question, sir.
Hello. Hi, uh my name is Midun. So I just wanted to give a bit of a background before I get into questions. So I used to be in Delhi where I used to travel with ten bucks in Eriksa and the card will take me in wherever I want to in the metro. Then I shifted to Bangalore, then what I had to, I just need my mobile to travel anywhere in Bangalore. I used to use this Quickrate and things like that. Now I live in Shillong where none of these things work, right? So I uh I'm just uh getting to your point that like, you know, ONDC works on the market force-led uh model, right? So if we think as an northeast as a region, where there is no much uh penetration of the mobile, like, you know, the digital layer is not there. So how do we go about it, like, what should be the approach? This is like, I work very closely with the government side as well, so it's more of like coming from the, I mean, like, from their angle. How should a government go, do about it?
I think there are a couple of steps to take, right? You can start by looking at, there is diverse inventory and some of it is, see, where, if inventory is not digitized, that's the first problem to solve, right? Because ONDC primarily supports market access, right? We don't do the actual physical digitization or, for example, the work Priya does in terms of getting, you know, Android POS machines into the bus, et cetera, right? Somebody would need to do that, right? So you will need to look at and and let's have a conversation offline, right? To look at what modes of transportation is digitized, what can you quickly bring to the network, right? What needs digitization and therefore first let's work on digitization and then bring it to the network. So it will be a hybrid approach and state to state, city to city, this will vary, yeah? Cool. Thank you. I think with that, we'll conclude the session. I'll just call upon Balaji to just.
Thank you. Uh invite Nitin to provide the moment of thanks to our panelists.